Pero po sa ating mga heads at saka mga kagawal, may tax po ito. Sagsa tax, kasi inexas of ninety thousand po sa ating mga benefits, taxable ako. So 'yung ten thousand po natin, minus thirty percent.
Any objections? Show us the supporting number.
Ah, ang ating accountant, pwede niya gawin na hindi minusan 'yung ten thousand. Ah, salary. Pero, nagri-ano na yata sila ng ano, ng ano ba 'yung payroll? Anggawa ko po kung may habot po. And then ma-ano niyo ito po sir, kasi ang guidelines dito, four months in service, at in nakain po siya as of November 30, 2019. Pag wala akong four months at hindi nakain sa ng November 30, ah 'yung wala sa November 30, hindi na po ititled. Pero 'yung mga nakap- four months as, ah, less than four months as of November 30, prorated po. So ang release po neto is not, ah, earlier than December 20. So nasa ano po yun, na accepted order 19. So kung ano po yun naman na supplemental budget, sir, hindi po yun naman na ating supplemental annual investment plan. And then with regards naman po dun sa ating partial list, hinabot po mo pa talaga?
Dun po sa ating supplemental budget number three, tsaka annual investment program number three. Any questions po? Dun sa eleven million. Wala po? Okay. Ah, ma'am, we proceed to... Ano 'yung kanina?
Sa ating ano, partial list.
Additional partial list?
Para dun po sa mga request. Though, hindi po ako kumtali kanino yun, pero, siyempre, alam ko naman po dun sa mga list. Para may habot natin this 2019.
Any questions to subject partial list? So, any questions po sa ating partial list? Wala na? Counselor Probelanoy? Wala na tayo?
Wala na.
Wala na? Okay, ah, next, sila dalawo ba? Oo, may isang question ako. Dito sa ating supplemental annual investment program, five percent CDRRM fund, two fifty thousand. Pagka nag- Pagka nag-aano ba tayo, pagka nag, ah, supplemental ba tayo, required five percent aside ng five percent sa CDR, tsaka dun sa mga twenty percent development fund yun?
Ah, hindi po sir. Ah, mag- aside lang po tayo ng five percent kung may additional estimate. May additional estimate po ako sa, na five million sa business taxes. Kasi ang naka-budget po this year is thirty million, ang nakolekta na po natin as of November 30 is forty million.
From thirteen?
From thirty-three to forty million po. Business taxes.
Okay. So no requirement, no requirement. Any questions? Kung wala na, thank you very much, without the rules.
Thank you po.
So under the suspension of the rules, shall we proceed to our next item? Madam Secretari? Ah, what is the- Okay, ah, okay. It has been moved by Councilor Cilid, by Councilor Rado, for deleting of the suspension of the rules. What is the special body regarding item number one under proposed resolutions?
I move that item number one under proposed resolution, item, no, item number two, under proposed ordinance, of ordinance, and number one under proposed resolution. And the unassigned business regarding the, ah, partial list, German, be elevated to the business of the day for deliberation.
As removed by Councilor Cilid, by Councilor Rado, second by Councilor Apel Bakay, Councilor Verder, Councilor Segundera, to include the said three items in our business of the day for deliberation. Any objection? Kitingan, the said three items are included in our business of the day. Madam Secretari, next item.
For, are they coming to report?
Before we proceed to report, I believe that we are guests, providing the resolution supporting the opening of the special program in mathematics. So, with regard to the communications received, check na natin ito. Second, we proceed to item number four. Madam Secretari.
So, under communications received, we have a letter from Sherlin R. Marsan, Doctor Education Department Head, Mathematics, Alaminos City National High School, requesting for a resolution supporting the opening of a special program in mathematics.
As removed by Councilor Apel Bakay, seconded by Councilor Segundera for the suspension of the rules. Madam Secretari, kindly acknowledge your guest.
Our guest for this item is Madame Sherlin R. Marsan, from Alaminos City National High School, Department, ah, Head Mathematics, Alaminos City National High School, and Sir Adolfo B. Midrano.
Hi sir, hi, ah, Madame Redafteran po. Would you like to give us a big background po dun sa ating, ah, I believe that you are requesting for an endorsement, po? Okay lang, i-ano po natin. You have the tour program. Sir, sana medyo madalas kaya nagkatain na rin po kasi natapos 'yung hearing kanina.
So, the doctor and everyone, especially to the members of the Sambuniang Palyatoy, spreaded by our vice, ah, mayor, ah, Anton Jareks. I'm Sherlin R. Marsan, the head teacher of Mathematics Department in, ah, Alaminos City National High School. So we are, we sent a, a letter to the chairman of the community of education, Mad Adolfo Bakay, regarding the opening of special program in mathematics. So there are the main objectives of this program. The first one is to, ah, is, ah, to develop the skills, our mathematical skills of these students, especially the need in their future studies and career. Second, we, ah, by mathematics program, we can develop the twenty-first century skills of the learner, specifically the critical thinking and problem-solving skills. And the third one, among the city's schools division and region one, only Alaminos City National High School is not offering mathematics. And the fourth one, sir, can I add, it's very timely to offer the ma- special program in mathematics, because at the PISA result, the Program International Student Assessment, we rank seventy-eight among the seventy-nine countries. So, ah, I think, ah, by the special program of mathematics, we can, ah, elevate the rank in the PISA result. That's all po. And for further information po, ah, can I call the-
Yes, ma'am.
Sir Adolfo Midrano, ETS in Mathematics.
So greetings to everyone. Ah, I'm Adolfo Midrano, the ETS in Mathematics for the ETS of Alaminos City. And, ah, we are very thankful for the positive response regarding our letter on the opening of special program in mathematics. We know that, ah, mathematics really very hard, issue everyone about. But for those who are inclined, they are able to be developed further, enhance their skills, and prepare their futures in, ah, in engineering courses and other related in mathematics. That's why, ah, this the purpose is to make our students themselves in a workforce that would, ah, keep them, ah, improve their skills in mathematics. So, we are requesting this, ah, ah, support from the body that, ah, the, is set the end, can be open for the twenty, ah, twenty, twenty, twenty-one. For the Alaminos National High School.
Any questions to the body?
Oh, I do have question, Mr. Jaren. But, ah, ah, we are, I am very supportive to that, ah, request by Doctor Midrano. And, ah, to my colleagues, pinag-usapan na po natin, um, about education, ah, sana sagotanin natin ito, dahil dito lang po ang matikitan namin na isang paraan, para umangat ang kaan naman ng ating mga, ah, mataaral sa mathematics. So, and thank you so much, ah, Doctor Midrano.
Any questions? Counselor Season?
Ah, yes. Um, regarding sa support ng SB, I'm sure bibigay naman po 'yung resolution. Pero tanong ko lang po, pagka nag- special program in mathematics, ano pong ibibigay sa mga bata? Paano, paano, magkakaroon ba sila na additional, additional subject po ba to or time para, eh, ganun po, kung anong, paano po 'yung program?
Actually, ah, since we have the basic subjects for mathematics, there are other, ah, specialized subjects in mathematics, advanced subjects in mathematics that they are going to learn. And so with this, ah, we can prepare them to, ah, to, to be competitive in, in their studies in math. That's why there are additional subjects, specialized subjects in mathematics, like, let's say, for example, ah, ah, integral calculus, differential calculus, and other advanced. So if we let these students immerse with this, then we would be able to prepare them a better course that they would want to get in college. And so, if there is a special program in science already offered to, ah, ten years ago at Alaminos City National High School, tracking to the history of the graduates of special science, we, they are very competitive, because our graduates in special science are home loudest, they have the, ah, common mark na home loudest in the University of the Philippines or even in the, ah, university, ah, in other prime universities in Manila. That's why if we, if we offer a special program in math, then, ah, we would say that we can produce graduates in Alaminos City, that would become, ah, highly caliber and competitive in the field of engineering.
Any questions? Last question. Counselor Apel, Counselor Probel Bakay.
Ah, Mr. Jaren, ang tanong ko lang po 'yung, ah, eh, ah, sa ang government, high school lang po 'yung, lahat po ng national high schools sa mga Alaminos po, ang magkataroon po ng special program ng mathematics.
No sir, it will be, it will be only open to Alaminos City National High School, because if there is a qualifying test to enter into this kind of curriculum. So those who are only inclined in mathematics shall be accommodated and gathered by this special program in math.
May national high school din, hindi sa katag, hindi na over.
No, I mean, ah, all the school, ah, all grade six, can, can enter into this curriculum. So we just have to offer first in Alaminos City National High School. But all of them are, everyone in the, that reads in grade six can, can ability.
Sir, tanong ko lang, ano mga strand ba siya under?
Parang isang section.
Ah, ah.
It's, ah, similar ba sa special program?
Special program in-
Similar additional program? Hindi po parang additional strands sa K21?
No, it's in the junior class, in the junior class. That's why, ah, we make the students, ah, perform better in the basic education. In grade seven, after weeks.
Last two, Counselor Rado?
Tanong ko lang sir, ah, 'yung bibigay ba nating special program in mathematics, makakasabay ba tayo sa mga programa ng Philippine Science School?
Ah, there are already subjects that are offered in the special program in mathematics, ah, comparable to, ah, special programs in, ah, special sciences in high school. So, kasi po 'yung special program in math, talagang, talagang purely mathematics po ang iniinom po natin. So curriculum could be comparable to the, ah, special to-
Kasi po 'yung mga dyan dito, bago sila po, nag-i-exam sila, makapasok lang dun sa Philippine Science, sa Vigan?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, the science side.
Ah, meron po silang, kasi actually, ah, the components of taking the qualifying test for special science high school is more on mathematics, English, and science.
That's why, ah, if the students are low performing in mathematics, then they could not be able to come up with a good, ah, ah, career choice. They are, during the first year, usually, ah, ang mga graduates po natin sa Alaminos, magkakaling po sila, but they are, they are lacking in skills in mathematics during the grade ten. Natalang po natin yun. That's why, pag nag-first semester po sila sa UP, USC, or PEU, dun sila nadisqualify sa Math One nila. Kaya, what we mean is that we need to prepare them to, to, to have a better performance in our mathematics in college. Para makakuha po sila ng, ng, mag, mag, mag reach out po sila ng pagiging home loudest ng mga, ano, ganun, mga honors students. Kaya, ah, kailangan mag-prepare po ang mga bata po natin na mahurgle po nila 'yung first semester or one, one year sa pagiging first year. Kasi pag second year na po sila, competitive na po sila, hindi ko sila already adjusted.
Okay, to close, Counselor Rado?
Yeah, sir. Without, without the resolution, you can't open the course.
Ah, it is a requirement from the regional office that the resolution must be a part of the requirement. So we cannot offer the, ah, special program in mathematics without the resolution from the Sanggulian Department.
Just excluding our morals, morals for-
Ah, it could also be, it's, it's-
Thank you for the monetary, Counselor Seion.
Maybe naman po tayong mag-ano, kasi we, ah, there are some also financial needs in the operating of PM, because we need also learning resource material. So-
Okay.
Ah, bigyan na, na, na assista, through those school board. Yeah, yeah. Unido na lang siya.
Okay, ah, sir. Ah, Sherlin, ah, let's assure that the Sanggulian is still to support to, ah, increase the quality of innovation po in our city.
Thank you so much, sir, also, and the body for accommodating us. Thank you po, salamat. Mayaman po naman.
So we will now lift the suspension of the rules. This applies to the body regarding item number four, Counselor Apel Bakay. As removed by Counselor Apel Bakay, seconded by Counselor Season, to include the said item in our business of the day for deliberation. Thank you, sir, thank you. So we invite to item number one, two, and three under communications received. Shall we just defer this to our next regular session?
I will, Mr. Jaren, the motion be deferred.
Next regular session, as mentioned by Counselor De Castro. So we move to unassigned business. We have one item. See, you see, ah, ah.
Plan?
Ngayon na ba? Okay, okay. So we proceed to our committee reports, ah, which? Alin dito?
Nadi, next, next na bata? Next na? Refer na natin? O gusto mo na report?
Counselor Probel, nice, recognized. Item number one, under committee reports.
Ah, a pick back of, ah, applicants for accreditation was evaluated last December 3, 2019, during the meeting, being the city evaluation, ah, committee hearing where, ah, Counselor, ah, Radok and Counselor Guling, with the representatives of the sources, after, ah, thorough, ah, evaluation, and his scrutiny of their respective documents, this committee found out that the applicants, namely, Samahan Magzasakan ng Balidadan and Santa Cruz Savings and Development Cooperative, have successfully complied with the requirements described by the law for accreditation, and the same committee strongly recommends that the applicant's name herein be confirmed with certificate of accreditation. The amount, the committee moved for the adoption of this committee report and that a resolution accrediting the two CSOs which have fully complied with the statutory, our business of the day for the regional program.
Second.
As moved by Counselor Probel Rado, and seconded by Counselor Radok, to adopt, ah, said committee report and to include the said item in our business of the day. Any objection? Kitingan, the committee report is hereby adopted and, ah, item is included in our business of the day for deliberation. So next item, Madam Secretari.
The next item under committee report is a joint committee report from the hearing held on December 4 regarding the ordinance describing the guidelines for the implementation of preemptive evacuation, forced evacuation, and other measures, drilling, man-made, or natural disasters.
The committee hearing was conducted on December 4, 2019, at 10 o'clock in the morning. Present were Councilors Lade de Leon, Apolón Neba, and Nurse Trulli. There were several resource speakers representing the local government through the CDRMO, CSWD, City Health Office, also Philippine National Police, Brangway captains, councilors, and officials, as reflected in the Secretariat's Register of Attendance. The proposed ordinance on preemptive and forced evacuation was discussed with the active participation of all attendees. Share their various experience arising from rescue and evacuation efforts. Instances have been mentioned regarding resistance on the part of would-be evacuees from complying with evacuation efforts that unnecessarily put at risk the city's first responders. It was a common observation of the attendees that the proposed measure is very timely and will prove beneficial to our first responders and volunteers in cases of natural and man-made casualties. Suggestions were made regarding the possibility of allowing specifically identified persons to stay in their residences in cases of prevention, preventive evacuations. In case however that the weather conditions worsen or should the storm signal be raised to category three, then persons are without any option to remain in identified areas of concern. Discussions also centered on the degree of force that may be reasonably applied to effect either forced or preemptive evacuation. There being no other matters left for discussion, the meeting was concluded around 10:52 in the morning. In view of the above, the committee hereby moves for the adoption of its committee report and that the matter be rescheduled for public hearing on January 23, 2020, at 9 o'clock in the morning, PEB.
Yeah, before I update the motion, may I request our body to keep the noise on a minimal when someone is supporting, thank you. So Counselor Segundera moves for the adoption of the committee report, and the said public hearings will be set on January 23, 2029, 9 o'clock in the morning. Who will we invite, Counselor?
Um, I guess the same group that were here the last time, class?
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
And additional na lang po dun sa mga-
So Madam Secretari, kindly take note, invite 'yung same group na i-invite, as mentioned here, the committee report. Ah, and may I also suggest that, ah, sulatan din po natin 'yung mga CSO natin, and associations, lahat, para at least if they want to participate, ano nandyan sila, Brangway captains and- Mitch Wabill, hindi na siguro. Kasi yun 'yung- O si Kapital na bahala? Kapital na, okay. So, public hear-
Red Cross, info pala.
Red Cross, please, Red Cross. The committee, the public hearing is set on January 23, 2029, 9 o'clock in the morning. Next item, Madam Secretari.
A appropriation committee report from the hearing held December 30, the annual supplemental budget of the Balaobong Brangway. Brangway Balobong Balayang Balidadan Bulanay, Kabatwang Dulakas, Lukap Maawi, Palamis Pandan, Polo San Antonio San Jose, Tangaitay, Tangkarang, Balobong, Lukap, Tangsaysay, Polo, Antetramalia.
Please, Jaren, the committee here must conduct the simple five to the nineteen. Present were my colleagues, Counselor Apel Nia Bakay, Counselor Tadeng Muyo, and present were representatives from the Balaobong Police Department, Brangway. The additional budgets of the concern Brangway will discuss with their projects and their bioterrorism. Based on the conducted, such complya, rules and laws, this committee has concluded of the subject Brangway budget or in order. In view of the above finding, the committee hereby moves for the adoption of its committee report and inclusion of this matter in the business of the day for adoption of a resolution declaring valid and operative the supplemental as well as other bodies of the city of Brangway mentioned by the Secretariat and the committee report.
It is moved by Counselor Cilid Rado that, ah, for the adoption of the committee report and, ah, said item be included in our business of the day. Any objection? Kitingan, the said committee report is hereby adopted and the said item is included in our business of the day. Next item.
Joint Committee Report from the hearing held October 3, on December 5, regarding the full own sanitation.
The committee hearing was conducted on December 5, 2019, at 11 o'clock in the morning. Present were Councilors Lade de Leon, Apolón Neba, and Nurse Trulli. There were several resource speakers representing the local government, Department of Public Works and Highways, and the Alaminos- in the Secretariat's Register of Attendance. During the meeting, the chairperson raised the concerns of the provincial legal council of the province contained in the comment dated December 17, 2017, when the proposed ordinance was elevated to the Sangguliang Panlaluwigan sometime in November 2017. Discussions were centered on whether the comments raised their own regarding certain definition of terms, amount of penalties, and periods may be properly identified. It was a consensus of all present that the comments of the provincial legal council may be compliant subject however to some revisions, specifications, and amendments in the proposed sanitation ordinance. The chairperson, together with the councilors present, agreed with the consensus of everyone and suggested that the ordinance will be subject of review to incorporate and said proposed revisions of the provincial legal officer. Once done and completed, another committee hearing or a series thereof will be conducted to discuss the matters proposed for revision. There being no other matters left for discussions, the meeting was concluded around 12:20 in the afternoon. In view of the above, the committee hereby moves for the adoption of its committee report and that the matter be scheduled for second reading next regular session.
and that the matter be scheduled for second reading next regular session.
Pwede po ba, pwede na sa second reading, pwede pa rin po bang magkonakang series of, uh, meeting?
So, Councilor Seguntera moves for the adoption of the committee report. And, uh, to calendar our, uh, the said measure for second reading in our next regular session. Any objection? Hearing none, the said committee report is hereby adopted, and the said measure is calendared for second reading in our next regular session. Next item.
Under Committee Report from the Hearing House of, uh, contacted for the review of the 2020 annual investment program and City of Alaminos Pangasinan.
Mr. Chairman, uh, to understand, this committee joined the COVID hearing. Yeah. COVID hearing were conducted on liberal date, scheduled, uh, and part review of, uh, the scheduled annual budget hearings. Committee on Investment Plan for, uh, year 2020. The examary is, uh, examary are sparse. The budget of the president of the committee that the proposed annual budget for calendar year 2020 has a large amount of pesos 700,431,000. Some offices with significant increases from their previous annual budget are attributed mainly to the 10% travel allowance, the step increment, and increment and retirement benefits of. Offices were requesting vehicles and exigency of their service. However, as per consultation from the Budget Office representative, this aim may not be granted to the budget for strength. Based on the year conducted, this committee has concluded of the annual budget for calendar year 2020 as well as the annual investment program for 2020. And in order, and therefore, moves for the adoption of this committee report and inclusion, intervention for the business of the day.
Councilor Siri Lado moves for the adoption of the committee report and the said item, hello. So for the subject matter, annual budget 2020 and, okay, kindly revise the committee report, review of the approval of the annual budget 2020 and annual investment plan, program 2020. Committee Finance, apikinagin na naman po na quite unback si Councilor Radok and Chairman. Since siya po ang experience ng, uh, series of hearings po na ito. So, is there any objection, amendment, discussion? Hearing none, the said committee report is hereby adopted, and the said measure, the two measures are included in our.
Under Committee Report from the Hearing, contacted regarding the resolution approving and adopting the 2020 to 2021 local disaster risk reduction and management plan of the City of Alaminos Pangasinan.
This is under committee report. Councilor Seguntera, for the committee, yeah, that. Uh, since, uh, we were all present naman kanina during the committee hearing regarding the flood control the local disaster risk reduction management plan, uh, it is the pleasure of, uh, if para namang violent reaction, uh, this would be, I was advised that this would be treated for the local governments, governance. So if there are no questions, uh, Councilor Seguntera, would you like to give a few words or move? Just move to. Okay, just been moved by Councilor Seguntera, any second. Second by Councilor Lado. De Leon and Councilor Sison for the. At the. Council. Second. Second, third, third, third. Seconded by Councilor, uh. Okay, the written committee report will be followed, will follow. And since, uh, everybody was present, especially Councilor Proveninoi, so. Councilor Seguntera moves for the inclusion of the said item to the business of the day. Any objection? Hearing none, the said item is included in our business of the day.
We proceed to the business of the day. The first item is the appropriation ordinance enacting supplemental budget number 3 of the City of Alaminos, amounting to 11 million 70,000 pesos and, uh, 70,475 pesos and 75,000.
Let it, test, say it. Test views namin. Oo, ah, eh, eh, na. Oh, gusto, oh, sabay na, win naman yun eh.
The first item is a, uh, resolution. Resolution. Post Calitari 2019 Supplemental Annual Investment Program Number 3 of the City of Alaminos, Pangasinan, amounting to 11 million 70,475 pesos and 75,000.
Any motion, Councilor Siri Lado.
Chairman, I note that, uh, the proposed resolution concerning approving the total the proposed Calitari 2019 Supplemental Annual Investment Program Number 3, by the annual, amounting 11 million 70,475 pesos and 75,000. Questions, comments, objections, be adopted.
It is the move by Councilor Siri Lado, any second, seconded by Councilor Sison, Councilor Seguntera, Councilor Venerapago, Councilor Apol Bakay, strongly seconded and saluted by Councilor Alfred Velasquez Castro for the adoption of the said resolution. Any objection? Hearing none, the said resolution is hereby adopted. So next, our supplemental version number 3, as mentioned by our Madam Secretary, any motion?
Yes, Chairman, I, if there are no more objections, comments, and concerns regarding the proposed ordinance enacting supplemental budget number 3 of the City of Alaminos, I hope that say be adopted.
As been moved by Councilor Siri Lado, any second, seconded by Councilor Apol Bakay, Councilor, Councilor De Leon, and Councilor De Castro for the enactment of the said ordinance. Any objection? Amendment, discussion, hearing none, the said ordinance is hereby enacted. Next item.
Resolution approving the additional partial list of projects funded under the following funds. Under the 21st Development Fund, amount of Infrastructure Development Program, amounting to 40,000 pesos and 10,000 pesos and 28,000 pesos. And under the special purpose appropriation, assistance to barangays and schools, amounting to 1,593,617, uh, 17 pesos.
Mr. Chairman, uh, may I, if there are no more comments, objections, concerns, the proposed resolution approving the additional partial list of projects for the Development Fund, Special Purpose Aprosion Fund, uh, I hope that say be adopted.
It is the move by Councilor Siri Lado, seconded by, any second, seconded by Councilor Dampago, Councilor De Leon, for the, Councilor De Castro, uh, for the adoption of the said resolution. Any objection? Hearing none, the said resolution is hereby adopted.
Resolution supporting, supporting the opening of special program in mathematics at Alaminos City National High School, Alaminos City Pangasinan.
Councilor Apol Bakay. It is the move by Councilor Apol Bakay, seconded by Councilor Rabel Bakay, Councilor Venerapago, Councilor Seguntera, and Councilor Proveninoi, adoption of the said resolution. Any objection? Hearing none, the said resolution is hereby adopted.
Resolution accrediting 2,000 pesos. In the City of Alaminos.
Councilor Proveninoi, Chairman of Cooperatives, move that. To be adopted. It is the move by Councilor Proveninoi, seconded by Councilor De Leon, casted strongly by Councilor Lado for the adoption of the said resolution. Anong mga to, anong mga CSO? Councilor, what, uh, city society. Samang Magtasakan ng Baliyadaan and. And development cooperative. Okay, any other objection? Any objection, amendment, discussion, hearing none, the said resolution is hereby adopted.
Resolution declaring valid and imperative a 20 barangay budget.
I, Chairman, if there are no more objections, comments, and concerns about the proposed resolution, I hope that say be adopted.
It is the move by Councilor Siri Lado, seconded by Councilor Sison, Councilor Apol Bakay for the adoption of the said resolution. Any objection? Hearing none, the said resolution is hereby adopted.
Resolution approving the total of the annual, the calendar year 2020 annual investment program of the City of Alaminos Pangasinan.
I, Chairman, if there are no more comments, objections on the proposed resolution on the 2020 Alaminos Annual Investment Plan, I hope that say be adopted.
It is the move by Councilor Siri Lado, any second, seconded by Councilor Seguntera.